The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
We will call this council meeting to order of March 25th, 2024. First up, can we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Councillor Clark, Councillor Leiser, all in favor? Carried. Up next, the minutes of the council meeting held March 11th, 2024. You have a motion to accept those. Councillor Ford, Councillor Frank, all in favor? Carried. Original communications, delegations, and petitions. Up first is the GFL Cart Report for February 2024. We have a motion to accept that. Councillor Veroba, Councillor Leiser, all in favor? Carried. Up next, we have a request from the RM of Estevan in support for the CCTI grant, which I do believe they're going to do a road. The RM of Estevan would like to ask the city for a letter of support for our EOI for the CCTI grant to pave the RM portion of Sister Roddy Road to the Estevan bypass.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just going to call a conflict because I work for the RM of Estevan.
Awesome. Okay. So, that's why. All right. Okay. Just the EOI stands for Expression of Interest, and the CCTI grant is the Coal/Cannet Coal Transition Initiative. So, is there? Councillor Frank.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I'm very much in favor of this, especially with that potentially being a location for the new nursing home, with that kind of starting to make progress. I think getting that road paved would be fantastic, as well as just another easy access up to the bypass, so I would make the motion to support them. We definitely want to help out our friends of the RM of Estevan.
Sounds good. Do we have a second there for that motion? Councillor Ford, all in favor? Carried. Thank you, Councillor Leiser. Do I have to say Shelley's coming back in the room?
Councillor Veroba has returned.
Councillor Veroba has returned. Up next, written reports of committees. Southeast Regional Library Minutes of February 20th, 2024. I forget who's on that. Councillor Veroba, anything to add to the minutes?
No, just that the library is doing good. I'll have a few more comments maybe for the AGM one. Would you want to pass them all together?
No.
No, okay.
Sounds good. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes? Councillor Ford, Councillor Frank, all in favor? Carried. Up next, Southeast Regional Library AGM, February 24th. Councillor Veroba.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, actually, it was a good AGM, and we talked about the revenue and expenses for the year, and we also discussed about the cut with the $10,000 cut that we made to the library this year. And so they're working on finding a way to come back to the city and discuss the money that's going to be in their savings account. They have found out since then that part of the money that was in there is actually set up for collections, and so I just encourage them to make that known to council so that we can know exactly which collections and different things that they have in store for the library, which differs from year to year, and how they plan to spend the money. And then they hope that next year, when they ask for the funding, it'll be back to the full $20,000.
Okay. Awesome. Can't wait. Did we have a motion to accept the AGM? Councillor Leiser, Councillor Clark, all in favor? Carried. Up next, Sewers Valley Museum Minutes of February 28th, 2024. Who do we have there? Councillor Clark, I see your name on there.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to probably, the minutes are there, and the art gallery's very busy. They've had lots of kids' programs throughout the winter, doing quite well. And I would just like to let people know, although it doesn't show up in these minutes, that on the 28th, Thursday of this month, they're having an Easter egg hunt from 5:00 till 8:00, and a glow in a, a part of it is glow in the dark at 7:00. So they're very active and doing well out at the museum, and I will put that motion forward.
Excellent. Do we have a second there for that? Councillor Ford, I did see, all in favor? I did see an Easter egg hunt this weekend downtown that looked quite popular. There were lots of social media posting, and everybody was happy. And then Councillor Leiser had a good time there, too. Perfect. Up next, executive reports. City Manager. Appointment of Downtown Contractor. Associated Engineering completed the request for qualification, RFQ, for the downtown revitalization project and has recommended a contractor for the project. The RFQ ended March 19th, and there was only one bidder. The submission amount was for $10,006,000. Once the contractor has awarded the project, the city and Associated Engineering can refine the scope of the project with the contractor to ensure the project is within the allocated budget amount. Recommendation is that council accept the recommendation from Associated Engineering. Issue a notice award to ASL Paving for the downtown revitalization project. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just to add on to the report here, so ASL has done work in this type of project very recently and very successfully, so I think they are a qualified contractor, and through all the rating and grading that Associated Engineering gave them, they had a very high score. Just to reiterate that, once this is chosen, we can now work with the contractor to make sure that we can either reduce scope or change parts of the design to make sure that we are within the budgeted amount. So just to clarify that, that because it was an RFQ for 70% design from Associated Engineering, that the full project can be negotiated to make sure we're in budget.
Sounds good. Councillor Frank.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to, so with us approving them as the contractor, would you like us to make a motion to set a rate? Like to say we want to stay within the budget that's been allotted thus far, or are we just accepting there was a contractor at this point?
Thank you, Councillor Frank. I would accept the motion to accept, sorry, to accept the contractor, and we will have discussions with the contractor, council, and Associated Engineering to make sure that everyone is happy with the scope and the price of what's finalized.
Awesome. Councillor Veroba.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I actually had quite a few inquiries over the last week or so, since our last meeting for sure, regarding the downtown revitalization, and I think it was really good to have people who reached out, who sparked the conversation, and a lot of people just wanted to have questions answered. And so once we had the conversations with those that reached out, I would say all of the people that I spoke with were satisfied, and they were appreciative of the $7.75 million that the federal government grant is coming to us, is coming to the city of Estevan and not going to one of the other cities that would have been on the list if we had denied the funds. So I definitely will support this.
That would be a motion?
Yes, I will make the recommendation that we go with ASL Paving Limited, and that we work with them to see the budgeted amount.
Second there, Councillor Ford.
I can second that, and I just want to say now that we're, you know, awarding this contract, I think the communication with the community, everyone has a lot of questions, oh, what's going to happen with this, what's going to happen with that. Now that we will have a contractor in place, I think it's safe to say that we're going to be able to answer a lot more of those questions. We may not be able to answer all of them, but we are more than happy to have that dialogue and to be able to keep those conversations open, and when we know, everybody else will know. That's, I mean, I think that's what we've been trying to tell everybody thus far, and it's going to continue that way.
Awesome. Everybody's good? Do we have a second there? All in favor? Carried. Up next, Stock Control Fuel Tender. We are looking at, oh, that's the wrong one. Sorry, I went too far. All right. To advise at the invitation, 2024-2027, so this is a three-year tender, correct? Went out early February for unleaded and diesel. The tender expires March 31st. We have two people going for it, which was Southern Plains Co-op, the total of $907K, Gerard Volk at $947K. It is a recommendation to award the tender to Southern Plains Co-op based on the lower rate and the fact that we've been using the co-op since 2021 with no issues. Anybody make a motion for that? Councillor Clark and Councillor Ford? Any questions? Call Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. What was it? Do you know what the figure on the last three years was? There, I should have prepared you for that, but just was curious to see that what the costs have gone up.
Thank you, Councillor Clark. I can confirm that, but I think it was significantly lower just with the increased fuel cost and usage. And in regards to being it in the budget, it is under our vehicle maintenance and repair budget. It is something that we allocate every year, so this isn't a separate line item. It's in there, but I can get back to council with the confirmed amount of the last tender price. I don't have it on me. Thank you.
Councillor Ford.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think there's a lot of times where us as a council don't want to make big decisions for, you know, the next council and accepting tenders and everything else, but in this instance, I feel really good about it. I mean, we all know fuel prices are not going down by any means. Carbon tax prices are not changing, and they're going to affect everybody really greatly, so I just, yeah, I stand by my, my second there, that we, we accept this for the three years.
Okay, perfect. All in favor? Carried. Up next, executive, no, we're on executive, executive reports already. Up next is Engineering, ES.O3.24, First Street and 8th Avenue Capital Project. Now, this is the rehabilitation that's been going on for the year, and this year, 2024, will be chosen again, the First Street and 8th Ave. Contractor picked, Genco Asphalt, $713K. The recommendation is to accept this, and do we have a motion out there? Councillor Clark?
I'll make that motion, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Leiser, second? All good? No comments? All, oh, Councillor Clark, go ahead.
Thank you. I just, I just want to make a couple of comments on this. This is a, includes a street that was gravel in, in the city and has never been paved. The one, of course, the First Street has, but it goes down on an avenue, and we have probably one other spot in a residential area that's not paved. So for us to get this done, I think, is, is a big project, and I think we forget sometimes that we do this every year. Like, we've done Veterans Crescent, we, we did a shave and pave over on Centennial Park, we've done Duncan Road. Sometimes we get tied up in the downtown revitalization. That's the only thing we've done, but I think we, we've always done a portion in town, and we've always had a challenge whenever we do that, and we always accept that challenge, and I congratulate our administration for, for getting it done with, with what we have to work with at the city and in their budget. So I think this is great. It's, it's well done, and it's one of those areas that I think for years that probably felt neglected down there, so I think it'll be good to get that piece done. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, these, these projects are putting us leaps and bounds ahead of, of other cities and towns around us, so it's good to see for sure. Everybody good? All in favor? Carried. Up next, Richard, you might as well grab the chair. Recommendation for approval, Land Development Services. This one is the subdivision, was recommended that the consideration be given to approval of subdivision application subject to the following conditions. Subdivision to be registered in accordance with the plan survey to be prepared by Saskatchewan Land Surveyor. Private waterline Block U/Block S to be within nine meter wide utility right-of-way. Utility agreement to be signed describing roles, responsibilities for the use and maintenance of the utility. And can, do I have, is this the Willow Park Greens?
Yes.
Okay. I will turn it over to you, Richard, and kind of give us an overview of this project, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council. Yes, the, involves two parcels, this subdivision. One is the residential parker, Willow Park Greens, and the other one is a parcel just to the east of it, which is owned by the city. We have our municipal water line that goes through that property, and then there's a private water line that extends from our property to Willow Park Greens from the east. And Willow Park Greens would like to install a small utility shed centered on the water line that they would use for utility purposes, but the water line from the city enters Willow Park Greens right up against one of their roadways, so they need a little bit of room to put their shed in. So it's a six by, I think, six meter by 12 meter area, and then the shed will fit in within that. While we're at that, and the surveyor is going to be out there anyways, we were looking at surveying out the rest of that private line so that we can have a utility right-of-way for that, and then an agreement registered on the title so that 20, 30 years from now, if there's ever any doubt as to who's responsible for maintaining that shed or that line or what have you, it'll be spelled out in a legal document.
All right. So basically, at the end of the day, just looking for a transfer of a little bit of land, and then Willow Park Greens is going to do the work. And a, Councillor Leiser?
I'll make the motion to take the recommendation along with the following conditions.
Okay. Do we have a second there for that? Councillor Frank, all in favor? Carried. Up next, pretty similar area. 222 subdivision O2, sub 24, Fourth Avenue. And this one here, can you take us through what's happening here, and the recommendation as well?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council. Yes, this is the property that Casa Colina is located on. The property is actually quite extensive, and what the ownership of Casa Colina would like to do is divide the property, maybe not in exactly half, but they'd like to take the, the level area, which is to the west of the apartment block, and make that into a separate title for future development, possibly for a new apartment block down the road. The zoning and everything's in place for it. We did have a couple of hiccups in processing. There was a collapsed lift station there that's being worked on in partnership between the city and Casa Colina. That needs to be fixed, but under the zoning rules that we have currently in place, even something like private park is in allowable use, so the recommendation is to allow for the subdivision with the provision that geotech and, if necessary, environmental cleanup has to be done prior to consideration of any kind of a building. The property itself, if created, if you can see from your sketch, public development access is at the same entrance that Casa Colina is on, and then there'd also be access to the laneway that goes behind Duncan Road. There's no future plans to develop an access on Fourth Avenue South at the bottom of the hill, because that, that access would have to go up the hill, and that would be a challenge slope-wise. If there's any other questions, then I'm here to answer.
All right. Do we have any questions? Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just on the access into there, it kind of shows along going north and south, that narrow piece, is that where they're, is that part of their property that they're turning into an access?
That's actually a separate property. It's called the parcel T right now. It's six meters wide, so it would meet the width requirements that we have for driveways and what have you. We don't have anything in bylaw that says that you can't have a driveway to a dwelling or multi-unit dwelling in excess of a certain length. The ownership as well is looking at putting in a, an agreement through, that would allow for access to this new parcel through the Casa Colina parking lot, and if that's the way we go, then there would be, I would have it so that there's a provision in there that says that agreement can't be withdrawn without consent of the city.
Councillor Veroba.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, Richard, I had the same concerns about if there was ever a multi-dwelling, another apartment building put on there, that the area, just to be able to go through that Casa Colina driveway right now, is quite congested, and so if you put another one there, and there's only one way in and out, I would just suggest that possibly looking at the back alley, which I guess we have our pathway system there, too, so that would be another hindrance, but there is a back alley behind Duncan that would be almost a secondary emergency way out if needed. I don't know if that's something we could be looking at.
As part of a development scheme, that is definitely something that could be looked at. Another thing that could be looked at is if we needed, a future developer could potentially approach the city. Lot R6 is municipal reserve, and they could get a road widening. Whether it's necessary or not definitely would depend on the amount of traffic generated out of there. When this proposal was first brought forward, the proposal was for a single detached dwelling to be located at that property.
Yeah, I think, I think definitely Estevan, hopefully down the road, is in need of many, many more multi-dwelling apartments, so it's great to be able to have that. So I would make the recommendation that we proceed with your recommendation, Richard, with the conditions that you've also listed here tonight.
Anyone else? Good. Do we have a second there for that? Councillor Clark, all in favor? Up next, United Way Request for Proclamation. Dear Mayor Ludwig, United Way Estevan will be holding our annual Day of Caring event on Wednesday, 29th, 2024. The United Way Day of Caring is a full day of people helping, giving back to our community, family, and friends. Each year, the United Way assigns local volunteers to local projects to make a difference where we live. Once again, the United Way Estevan asks that May 29th, 2024 be proclaimed United Way Estevan Day of Caring, and that the United Way Estevan flag be flown at City Hall during the week of May 26th to June 1st. Any questions? Call Heidi Heselink, yours truly. Heidi Heselink, Executive Director. Everybody have, Councillor Veroba.
So I am actually on this committee for the United Way Day of Caring. United Way Estevan's our Day of Caring, and it's a huge success every year, and so, yeah, I definitely will make this recommendation that we proceed with allowing them to come. I believe it's the April 22nd meeting that they will come and present and have the proclamation, but I believe they're also going to ask for a different day to do the photo, so.
Okay. So we're just kind of approving, and then they'll come and ask us for, okay. Councillor Ford.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I'm also a member of the United Way Estevan, so I will second this. It, it's a great day. I mean, we managed to have this event throughout COVID and everything else, and kind of the world turned upside down, and it really made a big difference for everybody in the community, and I think the past few years, going forward from that, has just been a really great help for the community.
Yeah, I was on the board of the Sewers Valley Theater, and they sure appreciated that day, for sure. So there we go, we're a second there, all in favor? Carried. And up next is proclamation, requesting the water tower lights be blue. Organization name is Willie Mitchell Air Cadets, Royal Canadian Air Force. Oh, there, here we go. Through April, we are encouraging Canadians across the country to light up their cities, businesses, and homes in blue, and to share photos on social media using hashtag RCAF100 and hashtag 100 Years of Flying Blue in support of the Royal Canadian Air Force and its personnel. We are excited to announce that we are collaborating, collaborating with the Guinness World Records as the RCAF will attempt to break the world record for the most landmarks illuminated in 24 hours. Ooh. Do we have any comments on that? Councillor Ford, or Sir?
I knew what you meant. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, actually Frosty from the Legion also approached me, and he also had a request, but Danielle Fleury beat him to it, so definitely 100% I will put my support behind this, and I will make the motion that we do that.
Good. Do we have a second there, Councillor Frank?
Yeah, thanks, Councillor. You know what? I was just, as I'm reading this, I'm thinking the, I know that the Air Cadets have been a longstanding organization in this community who do wonderful things and, and help young people learn the value of doing good in our community, so definitely something we want to help them out and support them with.
Awesome. Councillor Ford.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I'm the city manager. I know it's not as easy as flipping a light switch to change the water tower colors. Will there be any trouble since it's so close? I know that it's, some of it's already pre-programmed.
Thank you, Councillor Ford. I will work with Jack on our marketing communications, and we should be able to change him, and we can probably also change City Hall fairly easily as well for that day.
And it's, it's actually a week, is it not? April 1st to the April 8th?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Second there, all in favor? Carried. Up next, no introduction of bylaws, no public hearings and reports, no giving notice, no motions from committee, no consideration of bylaws, inquiries. Councillor Veroba.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, yeah, I had a busy couple of weeks with people calling, and another top hot topic was road conditions and potholes. A lot of people were giving me different roads in different places. One of them was near the mall, right in the mall parking lot, had a pothole, which I told them we can't do any parking lots that are not owned by the city of Estevan, but I also encourage everyone to just call in if they see a really big pothole, let the city know, because it's, you know, no harm in letting someone know, but also to remember that everything's kind of soft right now, and things will harden up, and the potholes will get filled, and so all the little cracks, and pretty soon the sun will be shining, and we'll forget all about those small ones that we're hitting right now. But our city's in really good shape. I've talked to a few different people in other cities, and they're a wet mess from all the snow that's trying to melt, and we're sitting over here in Estevan, Saskatchewan, feeling like it's spring already because our streets are mainly dry. Also, on Saturday night, I attended the Estevan Art Gallery and Museum. They hosted a, basically a speakeasy event. Most people that attended dressed in 1920s attire, and it was a lot of fun. So for anyone that attended, thank you, and I think they're looking at hosting other events that may also have a theme to them, so look forward to that, and please participate. And then, yeah, Sunday was the Legion for their spring poker tournament, which is the last one now being held until the fall, so I participated in that. I seen Councillor Clark there, and he lasted longer than I did, but we still both gave our money and supported the Legion, so it's just a great time to go out and actually support all of the different organizations and agencies in our community, and thank you to everyone who did that this weekend.
Thank you, Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Absolutely, there is so much going on. I was at the Foreign Family of the Year this, this last while, at the Legion, at the art gallery, that there's, there are so many things that I just know that there, every one of them involves a lot of volunteers, and I just want to put a big shout out to all the people that step up and volunteer for those to make them happen, so that, that has been a great week for that, and I think it's going to be a busy summer all around.
Awesome. Thank you. Councillor Leiser.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My family did participate in the egg hunt. It was quite an exciting day despite most of the kids being out in their ski pants with their Easter baskets, so a big appreciation to all the businesses that chose to participate. People had decorations, they were singing, they had themed music, and welcomed the kids into their businesses, so it was really appreciated. I also want to draw attention to today, March 25th, which is National Cerebral Palsy Awareness Day. Their slogan is Go Green for CP. Cerebral palsy is the most common lifelong motor disability, so the entire month of March is considered cerebral palsy awareness month. Approvements in public accessibility help people living with CP experience more independence and participate more freely within our community. Accessibility has been a focus over the last three years. There's been updates made to the affinity place washrooms. This year's budget includes new doors to make the leisure center more accessible, and the project on Fourth Street will reduce barriers to entering and exiting local businesses for people of all abilities. My inquiry tonight is about an outstanding request for an accessibility lift at the pool. A few members of the community reached out and said that they felt the project had stalled, and they're asking for an update on what we're doing to make the pool more inclusive, if you can please look into that.
Awesome. Thank you. Councillor Ford.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I also attended the Art Gallery Speakeasy event. It was a great success. This past week also, I had the opportunity to attend the provincial budget, and then Councillor, Deputy Mayor Sterneck and I were in also police governance training, so it was a good couple of days of learning and networking with people. Our, just a reminder, the United Ways AGM is this coming Wednesday, and the meeting starts at 7:15, so if there's anybody who wants to know what happens with the United Way, where our money goes, how we raise it, all of the organizations we support, it's a really good night to come out and do that. And then just finally, I had actually someone approach me this weekend. They were from out of town, and they just, they didn't realize I was on city council even, and they're just, man, our parks in this, your parks in this community are really great. Your garbages are, you know, taken care of. There's always dog bags and the things. They're just very well maintained throughout the winter, so just a very good, a very good thing to hear, and I just thank our park staff for all the hard work they do even in the summertime, in the wintertime.
Awesome. Thank you. Councillor Frank.
None received.
City Manager?
Nothing, Deputy Worscher.
No Trudy? Judy?
Nothing here, Deputy Worscher.
Nothing, yeah. As Councillor Ford said, we attended budget and all that, and I definitely thank a big thank you goes out to Elaine Walkham.
Nothing, your deputy Leeser.
Nothing, yeah. As Counselor Ford said, we attended budget and all that, and I definitely thank a big thank you goes out to Elaine Wachem for her perseverance into the MRI. When dealing with the government, the government announced that we may start fundraising for the MRI this upcoming year, and that the MRI will be in the budget for 2025. So, again, I just want to thank Elaine Wachem, the Wachem family, and Hank's Maintenance for the perseverance and bringing that awesome equipment to Southeast Saskatchewan. So, thank you all. Can we have a motion for council to adjourn? Counselor Veroba, Counselor Ford, all in favor? And I guess we need a motion for council to go into committee. Counselor Clark, Counselor Frank, all in favor? Carried. Sorry, now we stand adjourned.